An opportunity to get here with the weather as it is. At any rate, we have a large agenda. Mayor, would you want me to go through the agenda first and then we'll get into the DOT project? Or how would you like that handled tonight?
Well, the only reason we're in here is to give everyone a chance to see it blown up. And I appreciate everybody coming in here tonight. And it's very Christmas seeing here, too.
It is. Great job.
So, that would be fine with me. I'm sure the Representatives from ODOT, Chris, Tom, is that good? We'll wait till the end and then let you go.
Okay.
So, you just want to do the agenda now?
Yes.
Okay. The first item on the agenda is ordinance number 96-2013, an ordinance changing the pay grade of the Assistant Building Commissioner from pay grade nine to pay grade 11, and amending ordinance 47-2012. We can do a third reading on that.
Hey, Mr. Martin, Mr. Eagle said that he would like to hold that at second, being non-financed until next year. He wants to see what the, what our finances and the appropriations and so forth. So, he does not want to proceed further with that. He wants us to hold it at second, and he raises only for the next year. So, I told him that I would try to see about the ordinance.
Well, I'm just going to do a third reading on it. If you folks want to introduce it next year, you're certainly welcome to. But I'll go ahead and introduce that. Ordinance number 97-2013, and ordinance amending ordinance number 42-2013 with regards to the pay grade for the position of full-time administrative assistant of the Macedonia Service Department. I'm going to do a third reading on that.
Again, he would like that to be held at second reading and vote.
Ordinance number 99-2013, an emergency ordinance amending the codified ordinance section 1171.15B to allow a storage barn as a non-residential use in a residential district. My question is about this ordinance. Why do we even need it at all? The problem that this ordinance was actually originated for has been resolved, as I understand it.
Almost. If you want to just leave it on the agenda, that's fine. We're, when I see Dan, we're waiting for him to come in and make an appointment to appear before the BIC. My goodness.
Well, I'd rather do a third reading on this and just have people vote on it. I, I'm opposed to this simply because what it does is allows people to build storage barns in residential areas. And I will introduce this on a third reading. Ordinance number 122-2013, an ordinance confirming the appointment by the Mayor of Christopher Holmes to the position of full-time police officer. Shane, could you handle that?
Sure. He's supposed to work tonight. He's going to try and make it. Yes, alright. Sorry.
Ordinance number 123-2013, an emergency ordinance giving consent to the Ohio Director of Transportation to complete the re-alignment relocation of Interstate Route 271 northbound ramp and further authorizing participation in the project. Mr. Mayor, you want to address that, please?
Well, if we can, maybe at the end we'll let Chris and Tom explain the merits of this particular program. And maybe then you can decide what you want to do with readings after you hear what they have to say as far as what this will accomplish, what our time limits are.
Ken, I am aware that on January 7th, there's going to be a meeting here with ODOT for the public and for council from 5:00 to 7:00. And I have been telling residents about it to come and speak on their behalf. And I am asking that this be held at first reading.
We'll hear from the DOT. Who's going to take that one regardless? I'll take it.
Yeah, I think once you hear it, I'm not sure.
Right.
Sure. You need to hear it from them.
Ordinance number 124-2013, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to make an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, State Infrastructure Bank, CIB, for a line of credit for the improvement project known as SUM IR 271-12.65 PAD 97084, and authorizing the execution of all documents necessary to effectuate the same and declaring an emergency. That's another issue with the DOT. I'm going to just hold that in abeyance until I hear their presentation. Ordinance number, pardon?
Are you taking that one as well?
Yeah. Ordinance number 125-2013, an ordinance amending and supplementing the 2013 Annual Appropriations Ordinance number 21-2013. Scott?
Yes, sir. This ordinance, we need for fire personnel, we've had this year an increase in part-time salaries due to we put a belief to the man on and never addressed additional funding. And so, we have a shortfall between that and the pension payouts to make it to the end of the year. I'm requesting another $100,000 to be appropriated. The street lighting operating, that's a couple accidents that we had. Each pole that gets hit by motors and leaves highlights and charges us roughly $2,808 to replace. We've had, if we catch the motors, we'll get that money back through the court. But unfortunately this year, and also it still would have to be re-appropriated. But also this year, we've got two additional ones just happened in November, in October that we need to get repaired. This could be weighted to the next budget. We got the bill for them. I'd like to try to process it. The mayor's court state fees, that's money that comes in because of volume of court cases this year. They get a cut of all our court cases. So, this is merely additional money that we have to funnel back down to the state to pass through revenues. The legal fees, we didn't have enough budget and contract labor, contract portion of the legal fees. Right now, as I end December, I got about $800, I believe. So, in anticipation of December bills that come in, I'm requesting $8,000. And then the last item was because we didn't fill a dispatch spot this year in personnel, which we're trying to, we have a little bit of surplus there. And we've had an ongoing dispatch software and hardware upgrade that we've been wanting to do. And in the 911 fund, there's about $30,000 something thousand. So, Chief Golden and Son is requesting that we try to get this project started at the end of this year, move that $35,000 in personnel to operations and for capital, this project. And then $15,000 will come out of the 911 fund. And if they can upgrade our system to receive 800 calls. What else, Chief? Chief Golden not here. Anyway, it's an enhancement of the system that we're eventually going to have to do anyway.
Okay. How about 126 here?
Thank you.
Are you going to comment on ordinance number 126, 2013?
Oh, I'm sorry. The temporary appropriations, it's merely continuing the current ones. This is something that we have to pass so we can pay bills in January when the January budget or December budget's closed. I'm sure we'll have some financial meetings to get our full temporary, full permanent budget passed. So, this is merely a continuation of three months of expenses that I anticipate. Hopefully, we'll get the permanent budget passed by, maybe at the end of February. But we have a March 31st deadline.
Nick, could you handle ordinances number 125 and 126, please?
Sure.
First, second, third reading on both 125 and 126. Ordinance number 127-2013, an ordinance establishing the pay range schedule of compensation for city Macedonia employees effective January 1, 2014. Mr. Mayor?
Is Betsy here? Hi, Betsy. Could you come down, please? Betsy has put these together, these ordinances, for me to submit.
The...
The first one here.
The pay ordinance is, reflects a 2% wage change effective January 1, 2014, and then a 2% effective January 1, 2015.
And for which union?
The pay ordinance affects non-bargaining unit employees.
Okay.
We've settled negotiations with our five unions, and that is consistent with the base change increases that are in those contracts.
The 2% gross leverage, my iPad, it kept, I had to read horizontally by the time I tried to get it turned. So, it's, the bargaining CBAs with 2%, I saw some figures in there, but percent is 2%.
The bases are 2%. And then it's 2% for the non-bargaining employees.
Okay.
And then we adjusted the other rates that are within that pay ordinance corresponding to 2% each of those years. There's some rates for your part-time firefighters, some rates they receive for paramedic pay, different levels of credentials that they have.
So, this one's negotiated with the unions?
Yes.
The five, the bargaining agreements were negotiated with five unions.
Fifty, fifty-nine union, fifty-nine union old part-time employees that would be covered under that agreement would cost the city approximately $31,241 in the first year.
And it's consistent with past practice when the unions have been settled. It's my impression.
Well, the problem with past practices is you already have 4% of all the subsidenments. So, that's a little...
That's why you're not going to get...
Obviously, we ought to be in revenue crimes for that period. And there's, you know, the economy has been rebounding in the last two or three years even with that increase. And, you know, it's a concern. There was definitely, but again, it becomes parity with other unions.
The problem with CBAs is we don't say yes or no in 30 days.
Exactly.
So, if we don't take action tonight, we're going to have to...
Yeah, but the new council takes, we'll be on the 9th.
I know, but that's more than 30 days.
Shane, if I may. Scott, unencumbered balance.
$2.8 million in general fund, plus $500,000 in emergency, and $500,000 in retirement.
So, that's $3.8 million.
It's just a matter of any time you're going to spend, there's going to be a shortfall in something else, you know?
I'm just not comfortable going into the new year without appropriate, you know, us appropriate money and us talking about this every more time.
But whether we take action with the CBA or not, when were they signed, by the way?
Some were assigned as, well, they haven't been...
The unions, the unions have all agreed to them.
So, they, so three days from that morning?
Please, please, I leave voted at the end of last week.
And going into the new year, we can always do second and third on the 9th if the new council feels comfortable with that.
What's the dates, Scott? 30 days, what is, what is that day out?
Some of them, some of them would barely meet that. It's so close to that next council meeting, I would say that you'd have...
At least probably would.
...emergency council meeting before the 12th, which is at first schedule one of January. And we do have a wage reopener the third year. They get a 2-2 wage reopener. If things are extreme south and they get a zero on that third year, then you're looking at a 1.3% increase over the three years, which I think is highly plausible compared to, you know, if we were in negotiations, again, you know how they go, you know, four and three, lucky you get a two. But I'm looking at if we hired an outside legal firm to come in, and you know how that goes, too. You end up spending $50,000, $60,000 when sometimes the contracts are amount to, you know, the sergeant union contract for the first year is going to cost us $6,900, and the dispatch union $4,600, and the fire union $14. So, those are the options that you weigh when you go in there. I've seen...
Right. And that was my question. So, could you give me, it's 30 days. Can you give me the exact dates in the next 15, 20 minutes? I just want to see if there's anything to come due before the January 9th meeting.
I, you know, these are not significant amounts of money, in my opinion. I mean, I always like to use the word minimalist, and they are. Shane, why don't you do this on a 1, 2, and 3 reading? And whether it passes or not, the whole thing is about it that the new council or the 2014 fiscal year, they'll be able to take a look at it and they can draft an ordinance. So, Shane, why don't you do this 1, 2, 3?
The 127?
Yes, 128. And you're quite well acquainted with this, so you can do 1, 2, 3 here. Ordinance number 129-2013, an emergency ordinance ratifying a collective bargaining agreement between the City Macedonia and Teenshires Local Union 436 Service Department for a three-year term effective January 1, 2014 to December 31, 2016. Mr. Mayor?
All right. This is basically, all of these contracts were negotiated in good faith. And I'm very proud of my team that has gone through these contracts and established them because if everybody walks away from contract negotiations a little bit disciplined, it's a win-win. And I think that's just how it went. There was a lot of time and effort put into this by Betsy and by Scott. And coming up with these figures across the board is going to be something that we have to remember is there was a long time there that some of these people were never getting any raises. And now, we're barely, not even caught up to what was happening in other communities, but ours are still below. So, I like to bring that point up. As we go up by 2%, we're still playing catch-up to where the other communities are.
Well, I mean, I don't think these are going to pay enough as it is. It's not the problem. I just think that there are some things that are changing here. First, I don't want to just throw it off on the mic.
Thank you.
You're not a free session.
Thank you, Shane.
Well, I'm starting to make a decision. I'm just making a lot here.
All right. Well, we need, I kind of got lost there on 127. Who was going to introduce 127?
Shane.
Okay. And 128.
I have 129.
Yeah, I don't know what, I'm, my sheets are off. I have to go back.
129, Ken, who's got that Service Department one?
That's Nick. You want to do first, second, third on that, Nick?
That's consistent with overdue.
And then on ordinance number 130, Shane, will you do 1, 2, 3 on that? And Shane, will you do 1, 2, 3 on 131? Okay. Ordinance number 132-2013, Shane, could you do 1, 2, 3 on that? And then we have ordinance number 133-2013, an emergency ordinance amending codified ordinance number 161.19 regarding longevity benefits for non-contract and eligible Macedonia employees. Mr. Mayor or Scott, who would like to give the explanation for this, please?
This was a longevity schedule to be parity with the union. Everyone had different, each year of service. And so, to make it fair to the non-bargaining units, this is going to cost us, because some, some employees will get zero, some employees, they can get as much as $200 on this new schedule for one year, or they can get as little as zero for the next year. So, everything pulled out, 15 employees, about $4,800. It comes out to $68.57, something like that.
How many employees are we adding to this benefit of longevity?
There won't be added. There's always been a level of service. If you get three years, you've got...
Okay, so non-bargaining and any employees?
Well, non-bargaining has always had it, and it's just been a mixture of each contract at a different rate. And we try to, and so when we went into this year's negotiation, we tried to get everyone to be on the same page, it'd be parity, and non-union ones, and union ones took this schedule.
Rita, why don't you do 1, 2, 3 on that, please?
I'm not, I'm only doing for all these emergencies, ordinances, I'm only doing first reading. So, just so you know, I'm not doing three.
I'll take this and do three readings on it then. Ordinance number 133, Ken will do. Ordinance number 134-2013, an emergency ordinance amending codified ordinance number 161.2R regarding healthcare benefits for non-contract Macedonia employees. Scott?
As to the contract that we talked about with Summit County, we left one, but the rates are the same. In fact, they're a little bit less. The employees in these union contracts, instead of 5%, will pick up 10% at a wellness program that's been initiated this year. And so, that, before, we had a cap that the employees would be capped at $75 per pay. And one of the bargaining things on all these contracts coming in, we insisted that we lift that cap. So, if they participate in the wellness program, they have a chance to reduce their share if they hit the wellness marks by 5%. But even if our rates go up now in the future, there isn't a $75 cap. So, they're responsible for the full 10% of their premium.
This is the, we're basically joining Summit County then?
Yes.
With their health program. Okay. Rita, why don't you do 1, 2, 3 on this, please?
Again, I...
This is not an increase in budget, Rita. This is for healthcare. Just not budgetary impact whatsoever.
If we don't have this passed tonight, we don't have healthcare.
For employees.
There's no budgetary impact.
I'll go ahead and I'll handle this one. Ordinance number 135-2013, an emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Delta Dental Insurance for dental benefits for eligible Macedonia employees for the year 2014. I'll do 1, 2, 3 on that. Ordinance number 136-2013, an ordinance renewing the EAP contract with Tri-County Employee Assistance Program for the year 2014. Mr. Mayor?
Well, this one, Betsy is our expert, so I'm going to defer to her.
This is just a renewal of our current time. Tri-County, Tri-County offers counseling to employees for various services. They also put it into all of our drug-free training workplace that's required by the Bureau of勞者Compensation. We receive a sizable discount from the Bureau in exchange for having a drug-free workplace and the training required. And it's very reasonable. I think it's $200.
I think it's $4,200.
Nick, could you do this one, please?
Sure.
Thank you. 1, 2, 3. Ordinance number 137-2013, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Summit County Public Defenders Commission for the representation of indigent persons charged with violations of the codified ordinance of the City Macedonia. This is merely an ordinance that allows indigent or persons without money to afford an attorney to be provided public assistance. We do this every year.
Yep.
I'll do this one, and I'll do 1, 2, 3 on that. Ordinance number 138, 2013, a resolution confirming the reappointment by the Mayor of Jennifer Molnar to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Rita, would you like to do 1, 2, 3 on that, please? Yes?
I'm sure.
And resolution number 139-2013.
I want to do that one.
Pardon?
I want to do one.
A resolution, oh, Mr. Miller, I didn't even know you were here.
Why?
Shane was hiding you.
I'm not sure you were...
Resolution.
You were insulting here.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm going to do that.
I don't think I was insulting anyone. You could comment upon my poor eyesight. At any rate, resolution number 139-2013, a resolution of support and participation in the Brandywine Creek Watershed Balance Growth Plan. Mr. Miller, you could do 1, 2, 3 on that. And I'm sorry for not noticing you back there.
I'm used to it. That's okay.
Resolution number 140, 2013, a resolution objecting to the implement, implementation of the LEEDS program by the Cleveland Division of Water and demanding accountability for current billing practices. Nick, would you like to do 1, 2, 3 on that?
I would like to, yes. Thank you.
Okay. And there'll be a motion canceling regular meetings of council on Thursday, December 26th, in observance of Christmas week. And Mr. Miller, would you like to do that one, please?
My pleasure.
And the time is 7 o'clock, which I plan to finish at. And we can turn this over to you, Mr. Mayor, and you can introduce our guests.
Good job. With us tonight, we have two people that met with me and my staff, that met with me and my staff. All of this has transpired in a very short period. I would like to thank Tom Powell and Chris, let me have your last name again.
Huff.
Huff, Chris Huff, for coming out tonight on such a bad winter's night and to come here to help council understand the concept, the merits, the time periods on this project. So, whichever one would like to start, we do have a microphone there, and appreciate it if you talk into that.
Good evening. I'm Tom Powell. I am the District Design Engineer in District 4 of ODOT down in Akron. And I am the Project Manager for the Third Lane Addition on Interstate 271, which goes approximately 1,000 feet south of State Route 82 to about 3,000 feet short of the Cuyahoga County Line. We're going to be adding a third lane onto that interstate and...
Mr. Powell?
Powell.
Powell, yeah. Where's that area at Macedonia? I've never noticed that there with the rocks and the water.
I have not seen that area myself either.
I was going to say the DOT perhaps would want to think about turning that into a recreational spot.
Yes, I would like to go there myself.
Computers are great, aren't they?
So, in addition to the third lane on 271, in the process of doing that, we also need to replace some bridges. The bridges over 82 and the bridges over Norfolk Southern Railroad, Ledge Road, and North and South Freeway Drive need to get replaced in the process of this project. And hopefully, we can get our aerial up so we can show everything.
Did you say Ledge Road?
Yes. There is also, our district is District 4. We encompass Summit County. Cuyahoga County is District 12. And ODOT District 12 has a project coming that is going to be expanding 271 and the 480 overlap, which is going to start in Summit County and proceed north. And our project is stopping where there's a starting. On the project that we're here to talk about tonight, actually, it's all the same project. The realignment of the 82 northbound ramp from, to 271, and moving that ramp over to Freeway Drive will be done all in the same project. The Third Lane Widening Project is already set to sell, which means that the bids will be open for that project on May 8th. I have about a dozen of them there.
Yeah. What I'm going to do is hold one up and pass them out.
What did you, Nick Messina?
Did you say you're bidding out that ramp enhancement in May?
No. The project that we are currently scoped and have out for bidding on May 8th is only the Third Lane Widening, plus the bridge work. What we'd like to do is include the ramp realignment and improvements along State Route 82 with that project. But we need to get concurrence from the city to do the work and also to acquire the right-of-way required for that work and to go ahead and obtain that right-of-way. ODOT, through the Turnpike Funding, is going to pay for all of the construction costs associated with the realignment of the ramp, plus the improvements on State Route 82. I can go over quickly what the improvements are. As you can see, and I think everybody's probably seen, this was in the newspaper, actually, this week, the realignment of the ramp coming off of Freeway Drive, and it'll go north... and it'll go north onto the existing ramp. Removal of the ramp, the existing ramp, down to State Route eighty-two, now that pavement will be removed. We will improve Freeway Drive from eighty-two north, and we're gonna put in concrete pavement, curb and gutter. And we're also going to improve State Route eighty-two from the, the southbound exit ramp over to the railroad bridge. And we'll put six lanes of traffic through there. You'll have two through lanes in each direction, plus one left-turn lane in each direction. And our, our original thoughts were not to do anything on State Route eighty-two, but when we got our traffic studies performed, uh, it was determined that if we did not do that work on State Route eighty-two within about four to five years, State Route eighty-two would be at a, um, level of service which is not acceptable.
This, the land of which purchase, I'm very sensitive to the use of eminent domain, this, Mr. Joseph Dothis here. It's gonna be able to decimate his entire park.
Yes, it is.
Oh.
That is.
That's pretty, so, I mean, what, what is that there? What's there right now? Is it a building?
The old house is there where the Chamber of Commerce, if, uh, we have offered the Chamber of Commerce use of an office. I was informed today that office would might not be big enough. We have to find them some storage space. So as I was just notified today, we're gonna be looking if we can make that happen for them. There are, I think, two other tenants there. Uh, Chris's expertise is real estate. So, uh, Chris, uh, does this, is that basically right, how we're gonna be going? It'll be taking that building right out, that old house?
There, there's no other choice with the alignment of that ramp, the way it's worn there and, and the size of that parcel that you're considering prior to total take, so they'll take the structure. Law requires that you pay that relocation benefits, um, so through the city's-
But it's still a massive use of eminent domain. I mean, if it's something that we absolutely positively have to do for the safety of the city of Macedonia, or can we, is there, I mean, it just-
I think, I think Tom has looked at other alternatives.
We, we looked at a couple of other alternatives, such as moving the ramp north of their parcel so that it would, um, not impact that parcel. But in order to do that, or we really can't do that because the turning movements to come south on Freeway Drive to get turned around to go back north onto, oh, good. The, uh, the turning movements, if you're coming down Freeway Drive south to make this around, if we move that further north, the, uh, the angle makes it pretty much impossible to do.
Well, let me ask you this, you can get on, uh, two seventy-one north by heading south around it, just a couple hundred yards. Do we, have you been absolutely positive in the, the, the ramp here?
In addition, whenever we line up intersections, we try to line them up so that they're at a perpendicular and not at a, at a bleak angle or a, an acute angle. So by moving this ramp further north, we're, our angle's not gonna work out very well there, and our turning movements are not gonna work very well.
No, I think, I think, I must, I think I misstated it wrong. If we close the ramp permanently that's there currently, like we did with the one that was just south of two seventy-one, that one was closed a couple of years ago when the widening came through.
Yes.
So we didn't build that, can we just go with the one that's currently south of two seventy-one that takes you back around?
I'm not a traffic engineer, um-
May I, Tom?
Sure.
May I help a little bit? First of all, here, Shane.
Yes.
Eminent domain. Um, if we take property by eminent domain, uh, it's a lengthy process. Joe, uh, if perhaps you can back me up on this, we're not doing this eminent domain where we're, we're taking that property away. We hope to work with the people there and work out a settlement that will not only be satisfying them as far as the money they receive, but help them to relocate.
And I, and I, I get that there's, there's all those safety things there, but what if they don't want to move? Do we, do we know this?
Well, what we're talking about here is a traffic study that was performed by Kevin Westbrook, who's present here tonight. Kevin Westbrook did this study, and in the last paragraph of that study, I don't have it in front of me, but can you condense what you had in that last paragraph about Speedway?
Yes, uh, um, essentially, uh, the study we, we said, you know, closing the ramp is needed from a safety standpoint for a capacity moving traffic on eighty-two. If you don't relocate and put something else on Freeway Drive, you've got similar to what you've got today, which is people are using Speedway to turn around. You've got some traffic backups in various places, and as traffic increases, you're gonna have longer backups, uh, getting down to the Commons, uh, coming off of the Commons to get onto Route Eight, down by McDonald's, where this option clears it up. I think as you move to the future without this additional ramp and you don't have the left turn getting on there, you are gonna have, you're gonna have some issues. That's why I think this, this is needed to move the full traffic. Now, our hope was that the ramp down there to the south by Bob Evans, people would use it, and it wouldn't cause any problems, and that's where everybody's gonna go, but people are not all going that way. And if they did, and as traffic goes in the future, you're gonna have some, some queues and some backups that are, they're gonna cause some real issues around town. And so I, I think, I think that's, what you're asking is, do we really even put this in here? And my thought is, yes.
As we know, government is force. They have no choice but to move, whether it takes a year, two years, they're forcibly gonna remove from that property. I'm just very sensitive to using that authority that's given to us by the Constitution. I think it's a very, it's a very delicate tread on.
All right, if I may?
Yes.
Um, I've been informed that the people that own the property are here tonight. Would you like to speak to this? Do you have any problems with us doing this, if you're treated fairly?
No, I don't believe that we do. In fact, the property is for sale, or was for sale, and we had an offer which was withdrawn because that article appeared in the paper, actually, next day after the- Our concern is, our tenant has been offered space in another place. We were not informed of this. We are wondering how long this is going to take. If our tenants are allowed, that takes our income from that building. I'm sure we'll still have to pay taxes on it. Our main concern right now, we do, we want, as far as that we're concerned, the, you know, the property is for sale, the property-
So you, you, you were gonna be getting rid of the property? If we wouldn't have put it in the paper, it might be gone right now.
That's exactly right.
All right, so, uh, as far as the free space for your tenants, uh, that offer was made, uh, at the request of ODOT just so these people wouldn't be left out there sitting at desks with no house.
But I feel that the owners should have been notified.
Well- This is all preliminary, and I apologize for that.
I don't understand that, and that, I'm just stating our concern.
Sure.
And that is our concern.
All right, so you don't have a problem if, uh, we get there? I'm sorry, Joe?
Yeah, rental reimbursements would be part of any settlement, so you as a property owner-
We have no problem with them taking the profit.
Now, all that would be worked out as part of the purchase price. Well, that aligns a lot of my tiers, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that.
And, and our, our goals, if this proceeds the way I hope it proceeds, was to have the right-of-way acquired, um, by July first. That's what we discussed at our meeting-
Yes.
-with the mayor a few weeks ago. Um, in addition, you mentioned right-of-way, so I'll talk about right-of-way a little bit. In addition to, uh, now, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris. But in addition to the, the total take on this parcel right here, uh, we'll have a little bit of real estate taken from the next parcel, which is owned by Frank-
De Negris.
De Negris, uh, right here to take on the back of that parcel. Then, there's gonna be a little bit of strip on the parcel here and in front of the Speedway, both on Freeway Drive and on eighty-two. There will be, um, we don't anticipate any right-of-way taken in front of this parcel in this building. Maybe a little bit up in here. Down here with this parcel on the corner, because we have to improve this radius for truck turning, we're gonna be taking a little bit from this corner here. There's a driveway right here we're gonna close, and they will have access through the driveway in the back. And as part of that, there'll be reconfiguration of their parking as part of the real estate agreements. And, let's see, this driveway back here is gonna be an in-only. There'll be a little bit of right-of-way taken in front of this parcel, just for some relocation of some utilities. There's, uh, power lines that run straight down on the south side of this road that need to get pushed back a little bit. Now, I wanna talk about eighty-two a little bit. Like I mentioned before, the, we had the, the slide up here. Eighty-two would be improved from basically summer road over to the railroad-grade separation. We were gonna put, uh, six lanes of traffic in, currently there's five. The bridges over this, over eighty-two, regardless of if we do this improvement, are gonna be wide enough or long enough to handle six lanes of traffic. We had already determined that several months ago, that we decided we wanted to put enough room and have the piers far enough back that we could get six lanes through here because we anticipated the city would probably need to add another lane on eighty-two at some point in time. And it's a lot easier to do the bridges when you're reconstructing them than try to come in later and do them. So we were gonna provide, I think it's eighty-three feet face-to-face of the piers, which is enough room to get the six lanes through. This turning lane going into the Commons will extend from here all the way back through the intersection with Freeway Drive and North Bedford and start about right here. Our calculations show that you need about seven hundred feet of storage on that movement. Anybody who lives in the area can attest to that, that this gets all backed up and choked up all the time, so you know you need a little more storage space in there. There's gonna be also another turning lane added, or continued, there's one there on now, but, uh, to get onto North Bedford. This turning lane to go north onto Freeway Drive will start back here at the Commons and proceed up. There'll be, again, turning lanes coming south, and then this leg of the intersection's not really altered very much.
So it's a lot more than just the ramps?
Yes, and what happened is whenever we shook the numbers out and we looked at, basically, only improving from this point north, this whole section of State Route eighty-two just failed within about four to five years with our traffic numbers.
So this is all being done as well with the Commons to get more traffic through?
No, it's being done so that you can get traffic through the entire area.
Trying to get more through.
Yeah, we're just trying to get more tra- traffic through this area. Right now, it's a big, uh, a clog. I live in the area, I drive through here all the time, and it's-
I don't see the need for any of this.
I'm sorry, we're not taking public comments? You're welcome to sign in at the sheet, and we wanna keep this moving along. We had a lot today, so we're-
Making comments, I can't?
Uh, yes, we asked for those, okay? So if you please, you're welcome to make public comments when the meeting starts, all right? As your pro or con. And if you please, sign in at the sign-in sheet at the door, because we only take comments from those people who sign in.
Mayor, do you stand to financially gain from this project? Or are you running up? Seriously, this makes no sense.
If I may, I'd like to, uh, point to this area where we have delineators. Uh, one of the ugly places in town, as some people feel, is the fact that we have delineators right as people are coming in and out to, uh, Macedonia. With this widening and us making an adjustment to the Speedway driveway, where it'll be right in, right out only, there will be no more delineators. Just so your word.
I, I do, just another question. I'm sure you're gonna stand it, 'cause we're gonna have a big change during council. Three members are early, and so that's, I think that's probably the biggest we've seen, I'm assuming. Does that, does this decision have to be made, what's the time scale on this timeframe?
The mayor and, um, not sure who else was on the phone call. There was a conference call between the mayor and, and some executives in ODOT District, or Central Office in Columbus. And at that, during that phone call, um, it was determined that if this is not passed in December, we're not sure what the timetable's gonna be, or if we can even get the work done.
When would you figure it would be done if it's passed?
If it's passed, we have to proceed to get environmental clearance through the National Environmental Protection Act or the NEPA process. And the problem we're getting into is that this project is funded from Ohio Turnpike money. That money is committed to be spent and, um, open for bids in May, before the end of the fiscal year. This, this improvement here was gonna be included with that Turnpike money. The Turnpike money will not cover any right-of-way acquisitions. That's why we came to the city and asked the city to participate with the right-of-way and to obtain the right-of-way needed for the project.
So at this time next year, Tom, you think we could be using the new ramp?
If we get it passed this evening, and if the city moves forward with the right-of-way acquisition. Like we talked about a little bit ago, we were hoping to have all the right-of-way acquired by about July first. If we can get all the right-of-way acquired by July first, we can get the contractor going this fall on the building of this ramp. The project on two seventy-one, the, the Third Lane, is actually like a two-and-a-half-season project, meaning it's gonna go the last half of fourteen into fifteen and then sixteen, and be completed the fall of sixteen. What we were gonna do is to put what we call an interim completion dates on some of the work and the work at the ramps. This ramp and eighty-two is gonna be in the first year. Now, possibly eighty-two might not be done in the first year because we have a lot of bridge work to do here that things are in the way. But from this point north, we were gonna put interim completion dates on. And in order to determine those, we need to know when the right-of-way is acquired. But getting back to my point about funding, this project will be open for bids in May. If we don't have the funding commitment from the city and the right-of-way acquisition in process, I can't put this work into that project. And I have to put this work into that project no later than probably mid, beginning to mid-March. So any kind of delays from the city or on this right-of-way acquisition is gonna endanger the ability to get this work into that project. So a month delay puts us back a month on our environmental process. And somebody had mentioned a meeting on January seventh. That is a public involvement meeting concern, it's required through the NEPA process for public comment, but we can't hold that meeting on January seventh if it's not passed this evening. There's a twenty-one-day notice period and then advertisement in the newspaper and on websites and those kinds of things. And until we get a commitment from the city to proceed with the right-of-way, we can't hold that meeting. So if you push this to, I think you said, January ninth, what's your next meeting?
January ninth, yes.
We wouldn't be able to hold that meeting until probably, I think, the first week in February, which then endangers the entire project of getting this included with our major Third Lane project. And if we don't get it in that project, we don't have any funding for this.
Who owns the vacated entrance ramp that you're not gonna be using anymore?
ODOT will retain that.
All right, and what are they gonna do with it?
It will be, uh, turned into grass and just an area, open area.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, the, um, I think the, uh, right-of-way acquisition, as Tom's alluded to, obviously, when we acquire right-of-way for our projects, um, usually we don't allow any less than six months for even the smallest of projects, just because the right-of-way acquisition usually takes time. I think you're filing your project, um-
It's been filed for sale.
It's been filed, so we have until, you were saying, May, July?
In order to get this work as part of that project, I have to, and I'm sure not everybody's gonna follow this, I have to file what's called an addendum to our scope of services. Uh, I'll mention that this particular project, the Third Lane project, is not a standard project where we design plans and then put it out for bid. It's what we call a design-build project. We're putting out a scope of services detailing what we want done, and then the contractor has a design consultant on staff that actually does the design work for him.
Does that get that in by March?
That's already, the, the Third Lane with all the bridge work is already in our central office getting ready for sale. And what I'll have to do is add this other work by what we call an addendum. After the contractors start processing their bids and start determining what the bids are, you file an addendum to the contract, and then they get this, and then they have to include that with it. So we're kinda, that's why I'm saying we're behind. We need to get everything in.
I guess that's what I'm alluding to with the right-of-way acquisition. The sooner the city knows that they're gonna need to acquire this property to do the relocation of this ramp, the sooner they can get started on acquiring the necessary right-of-way for it, allowing it to get into the plan. Any, any delays is just gonna be detrimental to the, a detrimental bit. A detrimental, but it's going to cause snags in the sale of the...
Right.
Also, the owners of the home can also fight that, too. And also say that they don't want their house to, you know, be taken away in an domain. I know that for a fact because it happened to my parents, so... And it took a few years. So my question is, is that this was just given to us tonight, all right?
Wait.
And it's a three...
No, 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 no.
We have three readings, okay? And so nobody knows how the rest of all those council are going to vote here tonight. And with new council taking place and everything, and I really, you know, to me, I just... Myself, I think this is a wonderful project, and I want to see it moved to Freeway over there, the ramp, just so everybody knows that. But as far as the new council taking the seats here coming next year, and with our financial, Mr. Engel being gone here tonight, he has asked that this be held at first reading, and so has another member that is going to be taking a seat, that it be held. And I just feel that... We only got this an hour ago. We really, we've never sat down with council. ODOT hasn't. He's sat down with the administration and everybody else. Now, you've come to us.
I just want to add that Tom and Chris are here at our request.
I know.
It's a courtesy that they came to...
I just assume, I can tell my people on the seven...
Here's the emails from November 26th and 27th going to council.
Legislation just got here Tuesday. We just received legislation on Tuesday, Mr. Mayor. We've received emails. That's just been all talk. Legislation was given the other night Tuesday, and by law, it's three readings.
I understand.
And you guys should have known that coming into this.
No, that's really...
May I ask the most important question? Scott, if we were to do this and assume the worst, that it would go for the full $500,000 through CIB, what does that do to our budget?
If you take out a CIB loan, eventually have to roll the note, I mean, it's going to be about $50,000 a year, probably.
And where does that put us financially? I mean, you know kind of where we're at, what'd you say, about 3.8 unencumbered, correct?
Yes.
Not that we want to spend all that, but where would that put us going forward?
Like anything, like curtail a capital project, whether it was a street or something else, you know? But again, with revenue that comes up through the natural bump that we've been getting on air contacts, you know, it's hard to say. It's a manageable project financially, I think. For the amount of money that ODOT and Turnpikes Commission's going to put into it, in my opinion, I think it's a win for the long-term financial infrastructure of the city.
Let me ask the most basic, simple question. Can we afford?
Yes.
Well, right off the bat, Scott, South Bedford Road came in under budget. By how much?
Well, we actually have $280,000, $180,000 from the license plate tax that we took from the county takes more of a risk tax, so we got that back. So we have basically $180,000, if you want to say that we were going to use on Capitol Road this next year budget-wise, so we could apply that for this, and maybe even, we don't even have to go for the full $500,000. And then $500,000 was just a quote because I've heard earlier quotes of 210, 340. I mean, nobody knows what the price of that right-of-way until...
Right.
Until they actually, you know, go out for bids.
Yeah, the last council meeting, we were told $300,000, then it's now it's $500,000, and I heard it could get up to a million. I don't feel comfortable. I would feel much more comfortable going in with the new council to see how they feel. I don't know how they feel.
The figure you were given at the last council meeting was for the ramp only. And I was very surprised by ODOT when they were kind enough to call me to come down there with my staff to be presented this. Going back to the CIB loan, a CIB loan is not a loan where you take it all out at once. A CIB loan is a line of credit. So when you have a line of credit of $500,000, if you use $100,000, that's all you're going to be paying. Now, anything else, fellas?
Yes, one question for the guys. What's happening to that one house that we isolate and on the end there, the north end, it's all by itself?
It's all up there?
That one? That's not being affected by the project, so it's staying as it is.
Does anybody talk to them and see what's going on?
Well, they're not isolated, Mike. They still have a driveway. And Mike Plaid has said, abandon that house. It looks like hell.
I see people living in there.
There's people living in that?
Yeah, I believe so. I think they might have renters over there.
Well, at any rate, they're not isolated, Mike. They'll still have their driveways. They'll still be able to access it.
We're not going to put a barrier up there now.
It's going to be loud.
Traffic information. Sure. Just, you know, we're talking about this, I mean, what would happen if this project doesn't go forward? Is, you know, you let traffic go back and start using this ramp again. They're going to have their turn lane to get in here. They're going to go back to having three short turn lanes right in this section, which is going to, you know, do what it was doing a year ago, where the turn is going down Macedonia Commons, bleed into the through lane. You essentially have one through lane going through here. So this is ignoring the safety issues, which is a big deal. You know, Route 82 now becomes a bottleneck again. You've got essentially one lane. This turn lane here is not long enough to get up to Freeway Drive. It's, you have three short turn lanes, and traffic's only going to increase. If this thing moves forward, you know, when we thought the ramp was just, it was just going to be the ramp, it was going to be this one stretch through here split between two turn lanes. It was going to be a huge improvement. Now, when they're talking about putting a sixth lane on here, now we've got two giant turn lanes. Two really, I mean, you're more than doubling the capacity, the turning capacity that you have currently, that you had a year ago. And, you know, if you don't move forward, this, it's going to be a parking lot out here, and as the years go by, it's only going to get worse. The city's going to have to do something on their own. You're going to have to put the sixth lane in here, and you're talking a couple million dollars to put... Estimates, $2 million just to put the sixth lane in here. ODOT's going to spend $2 million. City's going to have to do that in a couple of years on their own if this does not happen, does not move forward. It's going to be so bad out there.
I have a question for you then. On Freeway, will traffic from either direction on Freeway be able to turn onto that ramp?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we have enough. You've put some truck turning templates around that.
Right.
Any of the trucks, I mean, you've got some businesses up on Freeway Drive that, I'm assuming, come down and probably go on to 271 North.
Right.
And we make sure that that could, that movement could be accommodated. And that's one of the reasons we need to take that house that's there now is to accommodate that movement.
All right.
Like I explained, you don't want to, you don't, you want to have...
There's a lot of businesses move there, and I mean, it's going to benefit them. It's going to benefit a lot of things, but I was just wondering about that. You know, I didn't know if we can only get it from one way or...
No, I'd just like to add a little bit, and if we don't go with this project, just like Kevin just explained, the work on 82 won't be performed with our project. The work on the ramp will not be performed on the project. And just like Kevin explained, within about probably five years, the city's probably going to come back and start applying for some money from OPWC or INHAT or somebody to actually put a sixth lane onto 82. Right now, I hate to say it's a gift, it's a free project, it's money that is coming from the Turnpike. Right now, if the city spends half a million dollars, is what our estimate is, they're going to get a benefit of a project that is worth a lot more than that.
Where is all the additional traffic that you anticipate in the next five years heading westbound? Where's it coming from?
It's our normal growth factors and pure traffic.
Yeah, I mean, there's traffic continually grows, you know, as...
What if we reduce Phase 3 from five lanes to three lanes?
The traffic numbers show that you don't need it through there. As you get closer this way, traffic just keeps adding. You're adding traffic from Valley View, you're adding traffic from North Bedford, you're adding traffic from Crow, you're adding traffic from Shepherd, and that keeps adding as you're heading west. Maybe east of Shepherd, you don't need four lanes.
We're not building new houses over there.
Well, I mean, the traffic estimates show that. I don't know that traffic information. I didn't do that work. But I know right here what the numbers are right now. And you need the lanes right now, and it's going to, the need's going to get even more as the city grows.
I can't understand why you want to add two lanes when we just took two lanes away from a half a mile down the road.
Because the traffic volumes aren't as high out there. I mean, you know, just today, you look at the traffic volumes that are in this section of 82, and you look at the traffic volumes that are on 82 in front of Longwood Park, completely different numbers. Completely different numbers. You know, it's, yes, it's the same road, it's a mile away, but you've got all those side streets that keep adding to the traffic that aren't out there, you know, as you go farther east.
Can I ask, what's the delivery cost estimate from engineers' standpoint of...
For this project, for everything ramping? Oh, the entire project is about $57 million right now.
No, I just mean our share. I mean, our share is actually right-of-way, but I mean, for the work that you're going to do on behalf of...
About approximately $2 million is what my ballpark estimate is right now. I haven't got it into a fine...
And that will cost us nothing?
Cost you the right-of-way.
Right. But no cost for engineering, no cost for...
It's already cost us, already paid for engineering.
Now, there's design plans that have been put together.
Design engineering is when they make drawings of what's going to be done, and they do all the spec work. That has not been performed yet.
Right, and again, construction engineering, which is the inspection during the construction, is all covered by ODOT and your Turnpike money.
You're providing the materials, the labor, and utility relocation and all those things.
Yes.
All right, any other questions? Tom? Chris, thank you very much for coming. I really appreciate all that ODOT's done for us. And anytime you're ready, if you have to go somewhere, but if you'd like to discuss...
Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break. We're going to close the meeting, take a 10-minute break, and the council meeting will start at 7:45 PM.